Menifee City Council, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on closed session items?
No, we do not.
Thank you very kindly. We are recessed into closed session. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are reconvened from closed session. Mr. Melching, do we have anything to report out from closed session tonight?
No, Mayor, no report.
Very well, thank you very much. Ms. Manwaring, Madam Clerk, would you please call your role?
Councilmembers Greg August, John Denver, Matthew Leesmeyer, and Mayor Scott Mann. For present, none absent, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and we have words of inspiration tonight from Pastor Ryan Sharp. Ryan?
Don't know about words of inspiration, but I can certainly pray. Would you all pray with me? Father, we thank you for this time and thank you for your presence here with us today. Lord, we, as we come up to Thanksgiving, this holiday, we're just going to remember all that we are grateful for and should be grateful for that we often take for granted. But we do that here tonight, even as we begin. Lord, thank you for this country and for the freedoms that we get to enjoy that so many other parts of the world, Lord, do not. And, Lord, thank you for the opportunity to even elect our representatives and officials. And, Lord, sitting in this room today, just looking up at this group and the decisions that are going to be made tonight, I'm all the more thankful for them. Lord, public service is not an easy thing, and so I pray that your hand of blessing will be on them, that you grant them each wisdom as they hear different situations and make these decisions. And, Lord, thank you for everybody that's here tonight, that they care about their community. It's such a blessing to live in the city of Menifee. So, Lord, may we just continue to have a heart and attitude of gratitude, and again, we welcome your presence with us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ryan. Before we do the pledge, if you would remain standing and join me and join the council in a moment of silence for the victims of the terrorist attack in Thank you very much. Councilmember August, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any modifications to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Mayor. Item 11.7 is being pulled from the agenda due to the withdrawal of the appeal from the appellant.
Very well. Are there any other?
And, I'm sorry, 11.4 is continued to December 2nd.
Very well. Item 11.4 is continued to a date certain, December 2nd, and 11.7 has been removed from the agenda. Thank you very much. If there are no other modifications, the agenda is approved. Do we have any presentations tonight, City Manager?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you call public speakers, please?
Sandra Toussaint. Good evening, councilmen and cabinet members. I'm Sandra Toussaint. I'm here representing the Romaland School District, Menifee's other school district, your north side. We will be visiting you from here in the months ahead to bring you peeks into our district, since not everybody knows about us. We're making changes that are going to make more people known about us all the time. Tonight, I would like to start with a thank you. The city has been very responsive, Mr. Smith and Mr. Johnson particularly, in helping us with our needs, with traffic concerns and safety concerns as they come along. The cabinet has been really easy to work for and very responsive. We thank you for that. That's the most important thing to us in our district is our students, whether it's their safety getting to them from school or what happens once they're there. Tonight, I'd like to talk about what happens once they're there. A program that we're very proud of, we put in place almost two years ago now, is our technology program. We put a five-year plan in place. We have been able to accelerate that plan, and as of today, well, actually, as of last year, we put this in place, but currently, our students in grades six through eight are issued Chromebooks, one-on-one, for 24/7 for the school year, just like they are textbooks. Our students use those Chromebooks in the classroom every day. It's part of our teaching. We use Google Classroom, which really is a control center, dashboard for everything. Our teachers control that. We use programs such as iReady, which is an extension of teachers and is able to give every student one-on-one teaching in direction based on their needs. We also use other programs such as Right to Learn, which is an English language program that does the same things, similar things, different subject, though, excuse me. We didn't stop with just our middle school kids. We know they need to be ready to meet our high school requirements. We go on down to our third through fifth graders with one-on-one daily Chromebooks. They're there. They stay in the classroom, though. We don't have them carrying them home. Those Chromebooks are used every day in learning. These are part of your units of study. Every single teacher uses them, and it's great to see this in the classroom. You never have downtime in the classroom when one group is being worked with, with the teacher. Other students are filling time. They're actually working. And then, we didn't stop there. We went all the way down to TK through second grade and issued iPads to them. Now, that's at a three-to-one, so at any given time, a third of the class will be working on the Chromebooks, and they do it in rotation. So, as you can see, technology touches our students every single day, and it's not to be flashy. We saw the big impact that we saw was when our teachers took, oh, sorry, when our students-
Excuse me, time's up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We're very grateful that you came to speak tonight, and we knew that you were with the school district when you said council and cabinet. It's habits are hard to break. Thank you very much for coming and sharing. Technology's important for our public education, and we're grateful that Romaland is investing in those infrastructure. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any more public speakers?
There are no more requests to speak.
Thank you very much. On to councilmember updates and comments. Gentlemen, Mr. August.
Yes, just a brief update. Saturday morning at Providence Bank, RTA sent down two representatives for a meeting, Lisa Amanelli and Diego Sousa. And what they did was they put a training program on for the members of VFW post-1956 for some plans that they have for, to help veterans get to and from hospitals and for people that are there to assist the veterans to get down, so that we talked a little bit about the plans that they presently have for transportation and future plans that are in the making or in the offering to, in the near future. So, I want to do thank Michael Cano, Service Officer, VFW 1956, for actually putting the program together, and we had about four people from the city in attendance, and it was a full house by the members from 1956. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. August. Mayor Protem Denver?
I'll try and be short. There's been numerous meetings and events having to do with Santa Claus coming to Menifee and tree lighting ceremonies, and there must have been six since last meeting we've had here. So, anyway, council and staff and everybody is there, and things are going swimmingly for that. I hope the flyer, the information is up on the TV.
Thank you. Mr. Leesmeyer, anything?
No.
I would like to report out on two things. The Menifee Veterans Day celebration on November 11th was well-attended, well-presented, and I want to thank both Mr. Johnson and Robert Lennox and your entire team. You really put on a very nice ceremony, one of the better ones that we had, including the flyover with the aircraft. And I had the opportunity to re-enlist somebody during the ceremony, which was pretty cool. There was a lot of people in the audience who had never seen that before, never experienced it, so it was a glimpse into what our servicemen and women commit to when they raise their right hand and swear an oath to the Constitution. That was really nice. The other thing I have to report out on is from the Riverside County Transportation Commission. The Projects and Quality of Life Committee is going through a series of analysis on how we fund, on a countywide basis, all the road infrastructure projects that need to be done going forward to satisfy the fourth largest county in the United States, a county that's larger than the entire state of New Jersey. And the bad news is that there's a $23 billion, with a B, dollar deficit in terms of funding the road infrastructure that we need to carry forward for the next 10, 15, and 20 years. And so, I don't know what that means for voters and taxpayers, but I wouldn't be surprised if you see a potential ballot measure down the road with Measure A, gas tax, whether it's a vehicle miles traveled thing from the state. Those things are happening at the statewide level. And also, the reauthorization of the Federal Highway Trust Fund, which was reauthorized through October 31st, but still has not been funded beyond that at this point. But there's folks up here on the dais. Mr. Johnson is on a statewide committee with the California League of Cities for Transportation and Infrastructure, and there's other people that are involved in it. But it was rather eye-opening that we received a scorecard, if you will, of a $23 billion deficit on the dollars that we need to fund our roads and highways just within Riverside County. So, on that depressing note, that completes my update for this meeting. Onto approval of the minutes. Are there any modifications or changes to the council minutes from November 4th? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Onto the consent calendar. Are there any items that we need to pull off consent? Mr. Leesmeyer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item 10.5 for discussion.
Very well. Item 10.5, Madam Clerk, is pulled for separate consideration. May I have a motion for the balance of the consent calendar?
Sure.
We have a motion by Mr. Denver and a second by Mr. August. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Greg August, John Denver, Matt Leesmeyer, Mayor Scott Mann.
Aye. Mr. Leesmeyer, you have the floor on item 10.5.
Thank you. Yeah, this item, I think, warrants some discussion for a couple of different reasons. There was a note in the staff report that alluded to changing the Quimby requirement from three acres per thousand to five acres per thousand, yet there was no language in the resolution to do that. And so, it seems like there was a question being posed to council. The other side of this, which is something I'd like to discuss further and maybe hear from staff, the logic and understanding as to why we're proposing to do this.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Mr. Leesmeyer, great couple of two questions. One, I believe, is an issue that Mr. Melching can take care of for us in short order, but the second one, I'll handle first, which is why we would do this. And then, I can turn it over to Robert Lennox, who can jump in and help me out with this, too. With the development that we have now, there are not enough residential homes built in the development currently to fund through CSA 145, since it was a prior-approved project. The CSA 145 would be the mechanism to handle the operation and long-term maintenance of the park. There's not enough funds in there based on the current amount of houses that are built now. So, extending that out, allowing them to build more houses puts up an equity in our operations and maintenance bank, so to speak, the money that we're able to operate the park with. So, that's the reason for the deferral. Is there something I missed, Mr. Lennox?
No, that's exactly correct.
And on the second piece, I think it is a question of council, and I believe staff was asking that question, which was not addressed. I don't believe in the resolution, but I'll have Mr. Melching tackle that.
Yeah, actually, having looked at the staff report and heard your question, Councilmember Leesmeyer, I think this is a circumstance where staff was attempting to answer a question that hadn't been asked, and that was, why does this agreement only provide for three acres per thousand when the current requirement is five acres per thousand? And so, that's why, in fact, the staff report says that the amount of acreage has not been adjusted from three to five in the agreement. And then, it goes on to explain why, and the reason why is because this project was entitled at an earlier time when the number of acres per thousand was three. So, I actually don't think, I don't think a question was being posed. I think a question was being assumed. So, is that helpful?
Yeah, it does. It is helpful. I just, help me understand, when this project was entitled, Rob or Robert, who determined that the 200 occupancy permit was going to suffice and that that was going to be the threshold for the acceptance of the park?
So, I believe it's originally entitled by the county.
Right.
I don't exactly know what date, 2004 or prior, 2004? I'm getting pretty good at the recollection. So, it was the county that not only approved the project, but placed the condition on the number of homes being built that would be sufficient to run the park in CSA 145, which we have determined is inaccurate.
So, you're confident that another 150 residents paying taxes is going to cover the need that we have to fulfill for that, what is it, 2.5-acre park?
Yes, I am. Based off of the industry standard for maintenance cost on a per-acre basis, that should be sufficient to cover it and provide a reserve for rainy day.
So, do we, a couple of things come to mind here. They've, the requirement for the park was at 200. They've conveniently stopped at 197. This isn't the only development in the city that's done this to us. I'm not inclined to kick this can down the road, as there are already 197, I don't know if there's filled houses out there, right? There's 197 occupancy permits of residents paying taxes into CSA 145 that don't have a park. All I see happening here is that we're kicking this down the road for him to build out to 347, and he's going to stop again. I don't know how we, sorry?
If I may, the previous Quimby agreement and conditions of approval didn't require performance security for the park. Our revised Quimby agreement and our revised conditions do require performance security. So, when the park plans are approved, we will get a performance security to ensure the construction of the park, so we won't be left in that type of situation again. But that's not currently a condition, unless you approve the item tonight.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Should they stop at 347, then, what are we left with? There's still no requirement for them to fulfill the obligation?
Notwithstanding the performance guarantee, similar to another development that we have where, if I may, Councilmember Leesmeyer, just reiterate the point that you made about another development. We have another developer who has not pulled their final one permit, which kicks in the condition of approval to build the park. And so, I'm a little, Mr. Leesmeyer's concern is valid in terms of what guarantee do we have to make sure that those types of things. And I understand that market conditions drive the absorption rate of new homes and all those things, and when permits are pulled, but can staff assuage our fears about this happening again on this project?
Knowing that there are residents out there that were told there was going to be a park at 200 homes.
Correct. So, my answer would be no. I can't promise that they're going to be moving forward and actually doing what they say they're going to do. This is an opportunity for us to motivate them to do that, to also put a protection in place for us, but all development, as you just mentioned, is a risk. So, there is risk associated with it. However, we're trying to minimize that by adding the component of the condition of the park with that, with what Ms. Gordon said, to actually provide the performance bond to build the park. But you're accurate in saying, they could get three houses or three units prior to that and stop. It did happen to us once before. I don't believe the market conditions are that way now. Again, all we can do as staff is make our, put our best foot forward, get an agreement that we think is going to work for us, and bring it to you for consideration. If you'd not like to go that route, we can go back, and we can try and do adjust it. Secondarily, though, if we don't do something different, you have what's currently in place, which is they're not going to move forward. So, that's why it's a policy decision.
Taking your argument and using it against you, I would rather have nothing than more of, more residents that are happy.
Fair enough. The choice is yours.
But help me understand what you feel the motivation is. What, how are we motivating them to?
If the park is built now, we cannot operate and maintain the park. We don't have enough funds in the CSA 145. That is why I would suggest, and I would ask and request by the staff report, that you either do that. If you don't approve it, they're not going to build the park. If you approve it, we're going to get a surety that they're going to build the park based on a future home. So, you're in a catch-22. What we believe is the best route is to approve this and give them the ability to do more homes, to put more money in the operation and maintenance of the CSA, so that when they build the park, because we'll have the performance bond, we can actually operate and maintain it.
Could we, I don't even know if this is legal, could we draft language somewhere? I don't even know.
You can reject the item, and we can start over.
Well, I want to talk about it. So, we're at three per thousand now, right? We obviously cannot forecast what the market's going to yield as far as how many houses they're going to sell. I'm just wondering if there's a triggering mechanism somewhere in there where if they don't meet an expectation by X, then they get bumped to five per thousand. Kind of kicks them into high gear, forces them, and then they recognize, well, wait a second, we're going to lose two more acres of houses if we don't figure out how we're going to build this park. And I understand this is also a maintenance issue for the city, obviously.
So, that's a great suggestion, and we'd be willing to add that in if that's possible. If not, we go back and reconfigure. At this point, this is a legal question for me. I don't know if we can adjust these items on the dais here at this point in time and then, you know, decide what we're going to do.
Sure.
We may have to, and Mr. Melching can jump in, reject the item, bring it back with some alternatives.
Mr. Melching?
So, the answer to the legal question that Councilman Leesmeyer posed is that ultimately, this is an agreement. It's a deferral agreement. And so, if the developer party is willing to agree to a springing requirement, that they jump from three to five acres per thousand if they don't get a park built within a specified period of time, then, if they're willing to agree to that, we can do an agreement to that effect, and it would be enforceable. So, that's the answer to that question. In terms of implementation, that's not something we implement tonight. What would happen would be that the item would actually be rejected tonight with direction from the council to come back and make those types of changes.
Just another food for thought. If we did do that and move from three to five acres, you'd need to allow them more residential units to put more money in the operations and maintenance budget of CSA 145 so that we can operate and maintain the park in perpetuity. So, you're-
How big is CSA 145?
I don't know what that question is. What do you mean?
How many, how many, what portion of the city?
It's the largest CSA that we have.
Right.
I don't know how to answer the-
So, I guess, okay, so the new Audi Murphy Park, that's in CSA 145?
No, it's in its own CFD. So, this is pre-approved prior to incorporation. Everything that comes online now has its own CFD, which is self-funded. This is one of those things that we got from the county.
Okay, so it's safe to say that any other prior-approved county project that is, do us a park, we would not be able to maintain that park either, because it would be also-
Depends on what, depends on what CSA it's in.
Basically.
Yeah. But there's eight CSAs, I believe. Nine, eight, seven, as he's counting on his fingers, yeah.
Okay. Well, unless the council had any other discussion, I would just ask for support in rejecting this item, so we can work on this little bit.
Mr. Denver?
My concern is, is that if we go from three to five acres, if they don't build a park within so many homes, won't they just build the park, and then we won't be able to support it?
That's the argument.
Mr. August?
Question for the city attorney. Let's say we go down the path that Mr. Leesmeyer wants to do. You're representing the attorney for the other side of the developer. What would that do for the relationship between the city and the developer? And should they maybe want to move it back a little bit at the end, what kind of a case would they have? This was the three per 3,000, the three acres per, what was it, one acre per 3,000? What kind of a, they would obviously clearly have a case that it was based on a previous agreement. So, what I'm saying is, what's the benefit of going down the path that Mr., is there any benefit to going down the path that Mr. Leesmeyer wants to go down right now? Or should it go the way that he's suggesting, that it might go, that it could go, what kind of situation would the city find themselves in then if we had to actually enact what he's proposing?
So, I'm going to try and answer that question by starting with the baseline condition. The baseline condition is that in three, I think, three more building permits, if we're at 197 right now, in three more building permits, the park has to be delivered. And so, the baseline condition is that the developer is looking to see that condition changed. They want to push back the horizon within which they have to build the park. And so, the developer is asking, in the first instance, for something from the city. And so, the city is, it's possible for the city to fairly say, well, if you want that, then we need some type of assurance that we aren't going to end back up where we are now. And to be fair, there is an assurance in the agreement now, and I think the question before the council is whether that assurance is enough, right? So, there isn't, and I'm sorry for the big wind-up for a very simple answer, but the, but there isn't a circumstance where this solution, the solution that Councilman Leesmeyer has suggested, would be forced upon the developer. It doesn't get forced upon the developer. The developer can choose not to enter into that agreement. And that's why I say we can make that agreement, because if the developer says yes, in a negotiated environment, that's where they want to go, then we will create the devices necessary to enforce the agreement.
So, it's only really a proposition? It's just a proposition to the developer?
That's exactly right.
Mr. Leesmeyer?
Yeah, I see that this Park C is actually called a park slash basin. So, is this also a mitigation basin of some kind that they haven't even completed yet as they've come down the road?
The basin has been completed. I did work with Yolanda Macalata, our civil engineer, on making sure that that portion of the facility had been completed and accepted for maintenance by flood. So, they did look at this agreement and made sure that with approval of the deferral, they weren't deferring any type of water quality mitigation.
Is this the basin by Paloma Valley High School at the corner of Holland and Bradley?
No, this is the basin that's closer to Newport Road off of Evans.
Okay, got it. Mr. Johnson?
There is an alternative that we could suggest, but that would be asking them or forcing them to pay in Lufi's at a higher rate. And Mr. Lennox can explain how that would work.
I'm sorry, pay what?
In Lufi's at a higher rate.
To make up the-
Parking Lufi's.
To make up the two per thousand?
Correct. So, if the desire was to have the developer trigger a spring forward to the five acres per thousand if they don't build, instead of making them build and ensuring that we don't get into a position where we have more park land than what we can actually support, they stick with the three, but the language instead say, as a penalty, you have to then pay the difference of the three to five because you didn't hit, you didn't build the park by that threshold that you promised you would. So, instead of taking the risk of additional parkland and not being able to support it, you could impose that as part of a clause in this agreement as well.
I like that more, because now we don't have to worry about redesigning this project for them.
Mr. Johnson?
Making sure that council understands that you would reject the item tonight. We would have to renegotiate.
Mr. Denver?
If we reject the item tonight, are there any, it sounds like the choices, they're just going to stop building. What options are we giving them that you could, that someone can imagine they're going to accept?
Well, that's a tough question, but we thought we brought that forward to you tonight.
That's why I'm saying that I think we ought to go forward with this. Not that it's a good idea. It's that county set us up for this. We're not going to do this again. I don't know what else we can do that we- We're changing the rules that were set, and it's not well thought through. We shouldn't be doing this up here on the dais. This should have, somebody should have brought us three choices, and here's some options and stuff. You can't just do this up here and have us come in with some logical intellectual discussion.
Mr. August?
Just another question. What is, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned a situation that we've heard about before. Mr. Johnson referred to another one. Now, of all the construction and projects we've had, I'll wait for you guys to get finished there. In the city, when, I guess what Mr. Leesmeyer is saying is that developers will use the occupancy permit to hold up having to put in a park. What's, of all the projects we've had in the city, and the city manager can answer this, how many times has that actually become an issue? And what's the likelihood, what's the likelihood of this developer, you either believe the developer or you don't, there has to be good faith, good intentions with the developer. What's the likelihood of that happening here?
I believe this is the second one, and they were both county-conditioned and approved projects.
So we don't see a lot of this?
No, the new ones that come forward, we do a different mechanism for making sure the parks get approved and get built. Audi Murphy Ranch is a stellar example of that.
With respect to the performance bond as part of the package deal, do we have the ability to call the bond before they hit the 300 permit mark?
Not as the agreement is currently structured.
Well, I stand by my request of the council that we just postpone this item, try and work out the kinks, maybe put a phone call in to him and see what he's amenable to.
So let me ask a, okay, before we go there, let me ask a technical question. Do you need an up or down vote on this tonight, or can we continue this item for further refinement and negotiation?
You, either one will work. With the continuance, you could give instructions to, for example, bring back options, alternative mechanisms to deal with enforcement.
What's the pleasure of the council on this matter? Is there a motion?
I would motion that we continue this item.
There's a motion to continue. Is there any direction to staff on that motion to continue?
That we continue this item to possibly negotiate with the developer to pay cash in lieu by a certain threshold of the house, by occupancy, maybe 300, that they make up the difference, the two per thousand difference in the Quimby requirement that we have now in the city?
Is that clear enough on the motion, Madam Clerk and City Attorney? In terms of direction, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second on that motion? Is there a second on Councilmember Leesmeyer's motion? Hearing none, that motion fails. Onto the matter of 10.5 as presented by staff, is there a motion to adopt this resolution as presented?
Motion approved.
There's a motion by, and there's a motion by, a second by Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver? Councilmember August?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
I'm going to abstain on this vote. Is there, does it still carry on two to one, Mr. Attorney?
It does.
Okay, please record my abstention on this vote.
Do you have a reason for that, Mr. Mayor?
I have several reasons, but I'm not at liberty to disclose what those are. Onto the public hearing, Agenda Item 11.1. We have a public hearing for substantial amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Program years 2014, 2015, and 2015 to 16 action plans. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Robert Lennox, your community services director, will have the balance of the item.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, and Council. I'm shortly going to turn this over to our management analyst, Margarita Cornejo, to give you the balance of the item, to give you a quick rundown. Every year, there is the opportunity for leftover funds from projects that either weren't completed or were completed well under budget to be reprogrammed in an upcoming year. Effectively, this item tonight, this public hearing, is to present to you staff's proposal to reprogram those funds. Margarita will walk you through the mechanisms to do that, and then obviously have that public hearing at your pleasure.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. As Community Services Director Lennox stated, I have a brief presentation for tonight's substantial amendment to program year 1415 and 1516 annual action plans. As you know, every May, we come forward and do a public hearing with the proposed programs and activities and projects that will be included in the upcoming year. And then in September, we have a follow-up public hearing reporting on the projects that were completed in the year that was just finished. So tonight's substantial amendment relates essentially to leftover funds from projects that were completed in the last year to reprogram them specifically to the Case Nacero Senior Center Phase III HVAC Improvement Project. This complements the improvements that were completed in the last few months, specifically with respect to various HVAC or air conditioning improvements. With that said, the city has a citizens' participation plan that requires we do a public hearing anytime we're going to be reprogramming funds, and that this public hearing be noticed with a 30-day comment period. Following that, the notice was published on October 19th announcing that the substantial amendment would be taking place and making it available for any public comment, and also announcing the public hearing for tonight. So the funding that is being proposed is $21,752, and the source of funding comes from the ADA Accessibility Rams Project that was completed in Sun City in the last year, as well as $12,000 that are coming from unused planning and administration funds. This will go to the replacement of two HVAC units and the senior center entrance to a non-sensor entry conversion to help better control the temperature inside the center. This is particularly important as the senior centers host about 3,000 visitors per month, but more importantly, in the summer months, when the temperature easily reaches in the three number figures, it serves as a cooling center. So with that said, tonight's amendment would take the $21,752 and establish the Case Nacero Senior Center Phase III HVAC Improvement Rehabilitation Project into the current 2015-16 annual action plan. So tonight's recommended action is that council conduct a public hearing and then adopt a resolution approving the substantial amendment to the 1415 and 1516 annual action plans, and subsequently authorize staff to submit this substantial amendment to HUD. With that, this concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Council, is there any questions of staff at this point? Thank you very much, Ms. Cornejo, appreciate your presentation. Before us tonight is a public hearing on the matter. Madam Clerk, was this properly noticed?
Yes, it was.
And have we received any correspondence subsequent to noticing?
No, we have not.
Do we have any speakers on this matter?
No, we do not.
I forgot to open the public hearing. So the public hearing was opened at time 7:49. And hearing the fact that we don't have any public commenters on this, I'll close the public hearing at time 7:50. And is there any discussion amongst the council on this matter? Seems to me like it's a good use of reprogramming the funds for a valid need. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution, 15-486?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver? Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Councilmember August? Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Onto Agenda Item 11.2, another public hearing regarding the consideration for annexation, number one, territory to be annexed to the CFD 2015-2 for Maintenance Services, adoption of resolutions, calling the special election and declaring the election results in first reading of an ordinance, number 2015-173, and ordering the levy and collection of special taxes on track number 32101, The Diamond Brothers LLC. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You're going to be seeing the next four items virtually identical. There'll be a brief staff report on each by your Public Works and City Engineer Jonathan Smith. However, as you recall, we did continue item 11.4. So in the middle of all of these, we'll have that one moved and continued to December 2nd. So, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, City Manager. As you are aware, on May 20th, 2015, the city established a CFD, citywide CFD, that would allow additional annexations into the CFD as developments develop, and developers would like the city to take over maintenance of streets, parks, and other improvements that they would like us to take over maintenance of. The first annexation, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, is the Diamond Brothers subdivision. The subdivision is a 58, 59-acre subdivision involving about $140,000 in estimated maintenance costs that will be levied $715 per household. With that, that ends my presentation for annexation number one. Annexation number two is the ARCO A&amp;P M project.
We have to take these items separately?
Yeah, take them one at a time, correct.
Okay, so very well, are there any questions of staff on annexation number one? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing at time 7:53. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody that wishes to testify on this matter?
No, we do not.
Have we received any written correspondence in favor or against?
No, we have not.
Are there any persons registered to vote in the territory of this district?
The Riverside County Register of Voters confirmed that there are no registered voters in the district.
If there are owners of all the taxable property in the district, have they consented to holding the special election on tonight, November 18th?
Yes.
Immediately following this public hearing?
Yes.
Very well. Do you concur that the special election can be held tonight?
Yes.
Very well. I'll close the public hearing at time 7:54. And we have a recommendation of staff that the council adopt Resolution 15-477. Is there a motion? This is the resolution to hold the election? We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Denver. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember August? Mayor Pro Tem Denver? Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, have you received official ballots and other election materials from the landowners who can cast their votes on behalf of the owners of all the property, including in the territory proposed to be annexed into the CFD?
Yes.
Have you, the city clerk canvases the election of the returned ballots and declares the result. Do you have a ballot that you need to open?
I have received the one and only ballot that has been cast in connection with the election for Community Facilities District 2015-2 Maintenance Services Annexation Number One with a vote of yes.
So the vote was in the affirmative for the landowner. I declare the election result as ascertained by the canvas of the returned ballot. At this point, we have a recommendation from staff based upon all the noticing and the hearing and the election of the landowner that the city council adopt Resolution 15-478. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Leesmeyer?
Second.
A second by Mr. Denver? Call the roll.
Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver? Councilmember August? Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Unanimously.
On the next motion, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance title per our municipal code?
Yes, Ordinance Number 2015-183, amending Ordinance Number 2015-173 and levying special taxes to be collected during fiscal year 2016-17 to pay the annual costs of the maintenance and servicing of streetlights, parks, parkways, streets, roads, and open space, the operation and maintenance of storm drainage systems, a reserve fund for capital replacement and administrative expenses with respect to City of Menifee, Community Facilities District Number 2015-2 Maintenance Services for first reading and scheduled for second reading and adoption on December 2nd.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, is there a motion introduced?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver? Councilmember Leesmeyer? Councilmember August? Mayor Mann?
Aye. Onto Agenda Item 11.3, a public hearing for consideration of annexation, number two, territory to be annexed into the same CFD and adopt resolutions calling for the special election, declaring the election results in the first reading of an ordinance. Is there a staff report that substantially adds to what you've already covered?
Just very briefly, this is the ARCO site in Menifee in Newport, two-acre site with an annual levy of $4,044.
Are there any questions of council to staff? Hearing none, call the public hearing open at 7:58. Was this properly noticed, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it was.
Have we received any written correspondence either way?
No, we have not.
Very well. Are there registered voters to vote in the territory of this district?
Confirmed with the Riverside County Register of Voters, there are no registered voters in the district.
There are no registered voters, thank you. And Madam Clerk, if the owners of all the taxable property in the district have consented to holding the special election on November 18th tonight, immediately following the public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you. And do you concur that the special election may be held this evening, November 18th, immediately following the closing of the hearing?
Yes.
Thank you very kindly. I'll close the public hearing at time 7:59. And we have a recommendation that the council adopt Resolution 15-479. Is there a motion? Yeah. He was trying to close the hearing.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Leesmeyer. Call the roll. This is in terms of the resolution for calling the special, the election for the purpose of submitting the levy on this particular parcel?
Councilmember August? Mayor Pro Tem Denver? Councilmember Leesmeyer? Mayor Mann?
Aye. Madam Clerk, have you received official ballots and other election materials from the landowners who can cast their votes on behalf of the owners of all the property included in the territory proposed to be annexed into the CFD?
Yes. The.
Very well, and what say you on the canvassing of the election return from the landowner?
The one and only ballot has been cast in connection with the election for CFD 2015-2 Maintenance Services Annexation Number Two with a vote of yes.
Very well, I declare that the election result as ascertained by canvas of the returned ballots is valid. And the recommendation at this point is for that the council adopt Resolution 15-480 of the city council, the City of Menifee, declaring the election results for the CFD. May I have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Call the roll.
Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver? Councilmember August? Mayor Mann?
Aye. Madam Clerk, would you read the title of the ordinance only for a purpose of introduction?
Ordinance Number 2015-183, amending Ordinance Number 2015-173 and levying special taxes to be collected during fiscal year 2016-17 to pay the annual costs of the maintenance and servicing of streetlights, parks, parkways, streets, roads, and open space, the operation and maintenance of storm drainage systems, a reserve fund for capital replacement and administrative expenses with respect to City of Menifee, Community Facilities District Number 2015-2 Maintenance Services for first reading by title only and scheduled for second reading and adoption on December 2nd, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney?
I apologize, Mayor, for not catching this sooner. We inadvertently just read the title of the ordinance for the last item. If you'll indulge me, I could read it really quick if you'd like.
Please, if we need to clarify it for the record?
Sure, this is to introduce Ordinance 2015-184, amending Ordinance Number 2015-173 and levying special taxes to be collected during fiscal year 2016-17 to pay the annual costs of the maintenance and servicing of streetlights, parks, parkways, streets, roads, and open space, the operation and maintenance of storm drainage systems, a reserve fund for capital replacement and administrative expenses with respect to City of Menifee, Community Facilities District Number 2015-2 Maintenance Services for first reading by title only and scheduled. and scheduled for a second reading and adoption on December 2nd, 2015.
Wow, thank you, is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver. Councilmember August. Councilmember Leesmeyer.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye. Agenda Item 11.4 has been continued to December 2nd. Onto Agenda Item 11.5, a public hearing for consideration of annexation number four territory to be annexed to the CFD 2015-2 Maintenance Services, adoption of resolutions calling for special election, declaring the election results and the first reading of an ordinance, amending Ordinance 2015-173, and ordering the levy and collection of special taxes on parcel map 34318, Menifee Lakes Plaza. Is there a staff report, Mr. Smith?
Very briefly, this is the location at the northeast corner of Newport Road and I-215, where the LA Fitness is going to be. This will have an annual levy of $4,691.
Thank you, are there any questions of staff? Hearing none, the public hearing is open at time 8:03. Madam Clerk, was this properly noticed and have we received any correspondence?
It has been legally noticed, and we have not received any correspondence.
Are there any persons registered to vote in the territory of this district?
Per the Riverside County Register of Voters, there are no registered voters in the district.
Thank you. Owners of all the taxable property in the district have consented to holding the special elections on November 18th, immediately following the hearing. Have they made that declaration?
Yes.
Do you concur that the special election can be held this evening, immediately following the public hearing?
Yes.
Very well, the public hearing is closed at time 8:04. Recommendation for the City Council to adopt Resolution Number 15-483 of the City Council, the City of Menifee, calling an election for the purpose of submitting the levy to the special tax within the area proposed. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Leesmeyer.
Aye.
Councilmember August. Mayor Pro Tem Denver. Mayor Mann.
Aye. Madam Clerk, have you received official ballots and other election material from the landowners who can cast their votes on behalf of the owners of all the property included in this territory?
Yes.
And canvassing the election returns, what say you on the vote?
The one and only ballot has been cast in connection with the election for CFD 2015-2 Maintenance Services Annexation Number Four, with a yes vote.
Very well, the election results are ascertained by the canvas ballots, and we have a recommendation that the council adopt Resolution 15-484 for CFD 2015-2 Annexation Number Four on the propositions with respect to annual levy of special tax to pay for services that's set forth in the resolution. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Leesmeyer.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver. Councilmember August. Mayor Mann.
Aye. And could we have a reading of the ordinance by title for introduction?
Ordinance Number 2015-186, amending Ordinance Number 2015-173, and levying special taxes to be collected during fiscal year 2016-17 to pay the annual costs of the maintenance and servicing of streetlights, parks, parkways, streets, roads, and open space, the operation and maintenance of storm drainage systems, a reserve fund for capital replacement and administrative expenses with respect to City of Menifee, Community Facilities District Number 2015-2, Maintenance Services for first reading by title only and scheduled for second reading and adoption on December 2nd, 2015.
Motion to introduce?
So moved.
Is there a second? Call the roll on the introduction.
Councilmember August. Mayor Pro Tem Denver. Councilmember Leesmeyer.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye. Onto Agenda Item 11.6, a public hearing for the Thornton Avenue General Plan Amendment Number 2015-038, and a change of zone Number 2015-039. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Bob Brady, Community Development Director, will give the balance of the item.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager Johnson, and good evening, Honorable Mayor, and members of the City Council. The item before you this evening is two ordinances and a public hearing for the Thornton Avenue General Plan Amendment and Zone Change. And I would introduce Ryan Fowler, he is the project planner for this project. He'll give the brief presentation to the City Council, and then after he's completed his presentation, we'd be happy to address any questions the City Council may have.
Ryan Fowler, Associate Planner, here to present the Thornton Avenue General Plan Amendment and Change of Zone, that's GPA 2015-038, and Change of Zone CZ 2015-039. The project is located on the northwest corner of Marietta Road and Thornton Avenue. Currently, the property is designated in our general plan as commercial retail. To the north and to the west is two to five dwelling units per acre residential. To the east is the five to eight dwelling units per acre residential, and to the south across Thornton Avenue is commercial retail. The site is currently vacant. To the north and to the west is single-family residential homes. To the east is the mobile home park residential community. And to the south is vacant land. The project description is as follows. It's General Plan Amendment Number 2015-038 proposes to alter the project site's general planned land use designation from what it is now, commercial retail, to the eight to 14 dwelling units per acre residential. And the change of zone proposes to change the project site's zoning classification from the one-family dwellings with a 10,000 square foot minimum lot size to multiple-family dwellings, which is the R2 zone. As background...
Excuse me, just as you exit the council chamber, all you high school seniors, make sure you register to vote. Please continue.
As background, prior to 2003, the project site's designation was two to three dwelling units per acre residential, and it had a five-dwelling units per acre senior bonus that was available. However, in 2003, Riverside County in their RCP, essentially their general plan, they designated that site for commercial retail. And then in 2013, when we adopted our general plan here at the city, we reaffirmed that commercial retail designation with the adoption of our own general plan. And then shortly thereafter, in December of 2013 as well, the applicant applied for a change of zone to change the R1-10,000 zoning classification to general commercial. There's a C1 CP zone that was for consistency zoning, to be consistent with the CR land use designation. And then going back to last year, that application was brought before the City Council back in July of 2014, and the neighboring residents came out and expressed their desire at that time to, that the property's designation be changed from the CR, the land use designation, to a residential designation. At that council hearing, Mr. Sudwicks, the project proponent, said that he held a series of community meetings with the surrounding residents. He presented the plan that was shown at that community meeting to the City Council, and that particular plan had 24 units on it, which equates to 9.05 dwelling units per acre. The project site is 2.65 acres, so factor that in, it comes out to nine, roughly nine dwelling units per acre. The council did not discuss the density of that particular plan, but they voted to initiate the GPA process to change the site's designation to residential. And then just last month, at the Planning Commission hearing, the commission adopted a resolution to recommend to council to approve the general plan amendment and the change of zone. So at this time, staff is recommending that the council introduce Ordinance Number 2015-181, approving general plan amendment 2015-038, and scheduled for second reading and adoption on December 2nd, and introduce Ordinance 2015-182, approving Change of Zone Number 2015-039, and scheduled for second reading and adoption on December 2nd. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, sir, are there any questions from council to staff? I have one, if you could go back to the slide number two or three that shows the surrounding properties? The one before? The one next? So, commercial property on the southwest quadrant of Thornton and Marietta, those look like several parcels, are those one owner or are those several owners? Do you know?
I do not know the answer to that.
Okay, all right. I understand... I understand the connection and the nexus for the residents to maybe make, not make, but engage the property owner on the northwest corner to make it consistent with the surrounding area. But I'm not convinced in the future that the southwest corner is not going to stay commercial, so I'm not necessarily going on record to that effect, but, you know, there's reasons why the county made their designations in the land use, and there's reasons why we made our general plan land use map designations, and so I'm going to be mindful of those in the future. Are there any other questions or comments from council to staff? Thank you very much. At this point, then, thank you, subject to recall, I'm going to open the public hearing at time 8:13. Madam Clerk, was this properly noticed?
Yes, it was.
Have we received any correspondence for tonight on this matter?
No, we have not.
Do we have any public testimony on this item?
Yes, we do.
Please call the speaker.
Joe Pope.
Thank you, good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to address this noble body. I live at the residence directly behind the property to the east, and want to thank the council for taking this up originally when the residents came in, wanted to get it changed to residential. I also want to thank the owner of the property, Mr. Sudwicks, for working with us in the community to come to a resolution, a compromise of some sorts, you know, to make it residential and keep it in harmony with what we have. While I'm not, you know, voted to represent all the angry people that were here before, up in arms, I can say with assurance that we are happy and satisfied mostly with what he's proposing. And the only caveat we would like is to make sure that we don't maximize the density that's allowable under the new zoning. But ultimately, the number that he originally proposed is acceptable, and thank you very much for listening to us, and we encourage you, or I encourage you, to agree with and adopt this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other speakers on this item?
There are no more speakers.
Thank you, is there anybody wish to speak on the matter? Hearing none? Yeah, of course.
Sudwick, you're in the audience, right, sir? Can I...
Come to the podium.
It's good to see you again, and again, I want to commend you for your outreach program to the community. The question that the gentleman just brought up, has come up, I've heard a little bit about it, but 24 units, 9.5 density, do you foresee any potential in the future for increasing the density, or...
Before, I'm sorry, before you continue on that questioning and before you answer, I'd like a ruling from the attorney, this is a zoning change. We're not talking about project design or future density in terms of the project of what may have been said at the Planning Commission or any other time. The zoning allows for 8.1 to 14, I believe. So to add, I mean, I don't want to stop you, I just want to get your advice, Mr. Melching, on whether this question is acceptable at this forum for a zoning change.
The answer is you can tread just a little into this area before you are off of the agenda item.
Very well.
I'll give an explanation later.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and continue, Mr. August, and go ahead and answer, and if we get into that realm, would you advise us, please?
Sure. I'll just finish up by simply saying, with what you originally talked to the council about, is that pretty much the way you see the completion of the project?
I am looking at...
Be careful, we're being listened to here.
I'm looking at residential options that fit in that zone. I'm not so sure that an assisted living center or something of that nature.
All right, that's great.
Okay, thank you, are there any other questions of the property owner? Thank you for that indulgence, and thank you for that question, Mr. August. Thank you, Mr. Sudwicks.
Thank you.
Yeah, are there any other, no other public testimony?
There are none.
Very well, we'll close the public hearing at time 8:17. Mr. Denver, we're inside the rail.
I'm trying hard not to go off the agenda too far either, but is a home for people who need help, is that residential? Commercial? It sounds awfully commercial to me. Is that residential?
Yes, if I may, the assisted living, that type of use would be permitted in that zone designation.
Huh. I think it's awfully commercial-ish, whatever.
It's a business when you get subsidies from HUD and other places, and then you charge residents for going there, yeah, okay. Okay, very well, we are inside, are there any other matters to discuss on the zoning change? What was the, I read the staff report, but I apologize for, I forgot. What was the Planning Commission, was it a unanimous vote of the commission?
Yep.
I think it was five.
I think it was, I think it was.
Huh?
Why do you ask?
Because our Planning Commission has rendered some pretty crazy recommendations lately, that's why I ask. Very, okay, so hearing no other questions, is there a motion to introduce Ordinance Number 2015-181 after the city clerk reads the title?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Menifee, California, approving General Plan Amendment Number 2015-038 to change the general plan land use designation of APN 335481015 from commercial retail to eight, I'm sorry, CR, to 8.1 to 14 dwelling units per acre residential, 8.1-14R, and scheduled for second reading and adoption on December 2nd, 2015.
Thank you, is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Sorry, second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Leesmeyer.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver. Mayor Mann.
Aye, and that was for the general plan amendment. Could you read the title of the ordinance for the change of zone?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Menifee, California, approving change of zone Number 2015-039 to change the zoning classification of APN 335481015 from one-family dwellings, 10,000 square feet minimum, R-1-10,000 to multiple-family dwellings, R-2, and scheduled for second reading and adoption on December 2nd, 2015.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please, on the introduction.
Councilmember Leesmeyer.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver. Councilmember August. Mayor Mann.
Aye. Agenda Item 11.7 has been removed from the agenda because the appellant withdrew the request for the appeal. Onto Agenda Item 12.1, discussion item on the matter of consideration of adoption of resolutions for council-sponsored measures with respect to the upcoming election in 2016. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Your city attorney, Mr. Melching, has a report for you on the balance of the item.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. As I'm sure you'll recall, at a prior city council meeting, the question of a couple of potential ballot initiatives was taken up by the city council, and some direction was given to write up the ballot initiatives and bring them back for city council consideration. That's what's included in your staff report tonight. The ballot initiatives, there are three ballot initiatives, but they fall into two really distinct categories. The first category is a single ballot initiative, and that is to determine whether the office of mayor will be subject to term limits that are identical to the term limits that are otherwise applicable to city council members. And that's fairly straightforward ballot measure. The second package of ballot measures, there's two alternatives that are presented to you that address a separate issue. And that separate issue is whether the term of the office of mayor will be extended from currently a two-year term to a four-year term, which would also be similar to the office of the various city council members. The only difference between the two resolutions that address the change from a two-year to a four-year term is that one of them would have that change commencing in 2016, which would be the next general election, next November. And the other would put that issue off until the election of 2018, and then have the four-year terms commence with the 2018 term. the four-year terms commence with the two thousand and eighteen term. And with that, at this point, it really becomes a, an item for the, for the city council to decide with respect to how they want to proceed on these measures.
So to summarize, there are three...
That's the first one.
I'm sorry?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was answering Mr. Johnson's question, I apologize, Mayor.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah.
On this discussion, there's a resolution for, based upon a previous unanimous vote by the council to go down this road, to putting the mayoral term to the electorate, there's two resolutions, one, one for a four-year term beginning in two thousand and sixteen, or a resolution for a four-year term beginning in two thousand and eighteen, and then the matter of aligning the mayoral term, term limits to coincide with the council districts that were approved by the voters on measure Z. Did that summarize the three?
That's precisely it. For whatever it's worth, as I presented it to you, I presented the first two as alternatives, that the council could choose tonight to decide, well, do we like the two thousand and sixteen option or the two thousand and eighteen option for presentation to the voters.
Okay, I understand. So, so staff recommendation is to, is it staff recommendation to only move forward one of those two resolutions?
Candidly, staff doesn't have a recommendation because it's bringing back resolutions that were requested by the city council. That being said, I can tell you what the staff discussion of that issue has been, which would be, it would be more clear question for presentation to the voters if one or the other of those two resolutions was brought forward.
Okay, I understand. Mr. August?
So let me see, I'm trying to recall back to the time we discussed this before, but one would be for the four-year mayorship to begin after the election in two thousand and sixteen, correct? That's one resolution.
Yes.
Right, and then the next one would be to elect a four-year mayor, but for the term not to begin until two thousand and eighteen.
That's the other resolution.
All right, thank you.
And then the matter of the resolution of bringing the term limit of the mayor in line with the, what the voters approve for districts, or for, for the council members with measure Z. Just what, Mr. Denver?
Wouldn't it make more sense to just bring, I guess maybe we're supposed to choose one or the other, couldn't we just say we're going to do the term limits, ask the people whether they'd like to choose term limits for the mayor and the other issue, and just put it all in one, come up sixteen, yes, no? Of course, if it was up to me, I'd put in there whether to have term limits for the council, too, if I could get that in there, because I don't like term limits in the first place, but I do believe in democracy, and if you throw something up and the people vote yes, then let's, I agree, but I don't think we ought to give them choices sixteen, eighteen, bunch of choices, let's just come up with something logical and go yes or no.
So, in other words, you want to put forth to the people, do you want a four-year mayor or keep it at two?
I'd just say a four-year mayor and, and term limits, yes or no?
So, all you want to say is, do you want a four-year mayor? That's it?
Well, I think, okay, if I may interject, I think your question is, the resolutions that are before us are, to answer your question, the question of a four-year mayor presented to the voters, there's already a two-year mayoral term.
That's right.
And so, the question on the ballot measure is written would be a yes or no question. Four-year mayor beginning in two thousand and sixteen, or four-year mayor beginning in two thousand and eighteen, that's, those are the choices before us.
You remember, I think you remember that it was my suggestion to do the, starting or beginning in two thousand and eighteen, but actually, it doesn't matter to me right now. I'm willing to go either way.
All right, Mr. Leesmeyer?
I would propose that we put two ballot measures forward. One is the mayor with a four-year term, and that second one would be that the term limits are applicable, starting in the term of two thousand and sixteen. Couple, couple different reasons. Number one, I liked one that was mentioned to me earlier today, that they coincide with the presidential election if it starts in sixteen, then you, you end up with a higher propensity of voters that actually show up to the vote for, for the position of the mayor, which is obviously the most prestigious position for leadership in our city. Number two, staggering it like that, it gets kind of convoluted, because I think if the mayor is going to be elected at four years, at a four-year term, should that vote go that way in two thousand and sixteen, when do you introduce the term limit for that mayor? Does it then become two thousand and twenty until the term limits kick in? Because you can't kick in the term limits in the middle of his term. Right? If the term limits start, if the term limits pass, and the, the decision is that the term limits don't apply until two thousand and eighteen, and you also get the four-year mayor, it starts in the middle of his, in the middle of that term, so it's kind of convoluted.
That issue was addressed in the measures that were presented to the electorate in two thousand and ten, and the language in the, in the measure that was adopted for city council term limits was that the term limits didn't apply to any term that was then pending, or then ongoing, so.
Nonetheless, I think, I think the two that I spoke of there make the most sense. Twenty sixteen, yes or no? And for your, I'm sorry, term limits, yes or no? Beginning in two thousand and sixteen.
Okay.
What the hell's the other one? Four-year term, four-year term. Yes or no?
Got it, so I got you, Mr. Denver?
I'm confused, if you put sixteen, if you put sixteen on as the choice, if they voted, they happen if it voted no for that, then it never starts?
Then it remains a two-year mayor?
No, no, they vote yes on the four-year mayor, and they have the term limits...
Don't pass?
Start at six, you said start at sixteen, what if they voted no, not sixteen?
Well, I think, if, before, before, I want to clarify with Mr. Melching, if the council passes a resolution tonight to put the question of term limits on the ballot, we could make sure that the language is written so that it commenced, the term limit starts with the twenty-six, assuming the voters approve a four-year mayor for two thousand and sixteen, that the term limit, if the voters approve the term limit, which they did for council members, it would commence with the two thousand and sixteen election. It's not, it's not retro...
That's what I, that's what I said.
Yeah.
He wanted, but my point was, if you put it on at sixteen, you have to vote on it, rather than hide it, you put it inside the verbiage, then they could vote no, and then it starts, when? Two thousand and forty?
A no vote would mean no change in the law, which would mean that the, that there would be no term limit, period, for the mayor.
The two, I'm confused, there's two questions. One was, there's going to be a four-year term...
Yes.
With term limits for the mayor? Or, the second one had term limits starting in fourteen, in sixteen. So, all right, so let me go the other way. So you say a four-year term for the mayor, and you don't put a date in, when does it start? The next election?
Yes.
Which is?
Sixteen.
Well, which would be under the scenario that he just presented, which would be, would be two thousand and twenty.
Yeah, this gets very confusing. I think you ought to just put in, everything starts in sixteen, forget it.
I think you, I think, I think you and Councilmember Leesmeyer are saying the same thing with respect to putting a ballot measure up for a four-year mayoral term to start in two thousand and sixteen. Mr. August?
I understand what Mr. Leesmeyer, Mr. Denver. I think the reason why I brought that up in the first place, and it probably doesn't make any difference, is because I was wondering if you were going to vote for mayor, and would you be voting on that for a four-year mayor? And I don't, I wouldn't say there's anything inappropriate about that, but I think that's why I originally brought it up. The four-year, as far as the four-year mayor, I really don't care if it starts in two thousand and sixteen, that's, that's okay with me, but I would be very curious about how it's worded. Do you, that's the only thing I'd be concerned about.
I would be concerned that Mr. Melching would make sure that we get it worded correctly based upon the intention of the council, but I'll tell you what, I do have a concern, I would like to articulate one concern that I didn't think about until recently, about a potential two thousand and eighteen start date. So let's, let's just play this scenario out. We put it on the ballot, the voters vote for a four-year mayoral term to start in two thousand and eighteen, and the voters approve a term limit for mayor. So what happens to the two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and eighteen term, which is two years? The four-year term doesn't start till two thousand and eighteen, whoever the mayor is, whether it's a he or a she, or anybody, you know, whoever, this is a question for Mr. Melching, he's shaking his head going, I know what's coming. In that scenario, similar to Mr. Denver and I, when we were on the inaugural council, Mr. Denver, although he's subject to term limits, will serve a full, a total of ten years before he's termed out, because he, the term limits didn't take effect until two thousand and ten, and he had already served on the council. So would that be an analogous scenario if, if, if we put it on for, to take effect two thousand and eighteen, whoever the mayor is in two thousand and sixteen serves two more years, if they're re-elected, then they could theoretically serve a total of two more terms at eight years? And then I have a follow-up question.
So, do you have an app for that?
I do, I was, I was, I actually have the text of measure Z, which is really what the mayor is referring to, the, the, the last sentence, if you'll, just indulge me a moment, the last sentence said, "Any council member who serves for two or more years of an appointed or elected term shall be considered to have served a term. Terms completed prior to this measure taking effect shall not be counted in determining eligibility." So you have to serve two or more years of a term in order to count as one of the two terms toward the overall term limit.
Okay, so with that language, then, here's the second question that I have. Councilmember-elect Sobek is fulfilling a one-year term, subject to term limits. The question I have, it's a very, it's a very valid question. If she runs for reelection in two thousand and sixteen, is she, can she only serve five years, or does she get another crack in two thousand and twenty and serve a total of nine years if she gets re-elected twice? Based upon the language that you just read, it seems to me that that's not a yes question, a yes answer.
It actually, it's, I get to say this because I wasn't here in two thousand and ten, and so I, you know, but I certainly wish the first sentence was wish, was written differently as well. Let me read that one to you now. "Any council member who has served two consecutive terms, or, or eight consecutive years, shall be ineligible to serve again in that office until an intervening period of two years has elapsed." So what happens, then, is you have a circumstance where, correct, the first one-year period would not count, it's not a term under this provision, because it has to be two years long to count as a term. But then there would be, the election in two thousand and sixteen, and then the election in two thousand and twenty, and if she were to prevail in the election in two thousand and twenty, that would result in nine consecutive years in office, and that's, that seems, it's, it's frankly not perfectly clear from the language of measure Z, but it certainly makes reference to an overall limit of eight years.
So the first and set, the first and last sentence seem to be, seem to contradict one another.
They surely do.
Yeah, so, so whatever we, whatever we move forward with tonight, please assure us that the language is more clear than that.
It is.
Thank you very kindly.
Could we clear up that language at the same time?
We're already amending measure Z, we could.
Yes.
Could we, could measure Z come back up again, or some change in measure Z?
Yes. You, you have the power, I mean, certainly, we would have to go back and retool the resolutions that are before you, that's not a complicated process, as you can see, the resolutions are very short, but yes, we could do that.
But then it would only become an issue if someone were to challenge it, correct?
That's right.
Okay. So, why don't we go ahead and get, let's take care of business at hand tonight, and then if we need to peek and tweak things later on down the road, whether it's this council or a future council, let's leave it in their hands.
Well, what is, then what does Sobek get? Does she get two terms or three terms?
Well, a term is, based upon, if I may, what you just described is the one-year short-term does not count as a full term, because it's not two years.
That's right.
Okay, so then, yes, she would be able to serve nine years, just like you got to serve ten years.
Even though it's, goes against what the beginning of this thing said, you can't serve...
More than eight.
More than eight. Two and, I think we ought to fix this, I think we got a problem here, and I, I think we can get, well, whatever.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council on the matter? I know, okay, so Mr., let me see if I can summarize where we're at. Mr. Leesmeyer seems to be in favor of putting forth a measure. Yes, Mr. Attorney?
I apologize, Mayor, I, you asked whether we fixed this problem in the resolutions before you tonight, and the answer is, I said was yes, and the answer is no. What the, what the, what the proposed ballot measure would do would subject the mayor to the same term limitations as applied to the city council members, and so if there was, if there's an ambiguity in the measure as it applies to city council members, it'll be carried over to the mayor as well.
So, I think in fairness, though, my position would be to put the matter to the voters for a term limit of mayor, because I believe the petitioner who brought forth the measure by getting fifty-eight-hundred signatures, certainly his, the intent was for the term limits to apply to all on the council, and his, and his, and his measure language did not take into consideration the possibility that the voters did indeed approve a mayor-at-large in this scenario. So, and it's kind of a cleanup, really, is, is where I'm at. If I may go, did that kind of, you made your point, right?
I did, though my point was more based on that there is, that we spent some, you spent some time talking about the ambiguity in measure CC, I think it was CC, no, Z, measure Z, I'm sorry, measure Z from two thousand and ten, as it applied to city council members, and you asked me whether this measure that's proposed tonight would not, would cure that problem, and it won't cure that problem. Moreover, it will carry that, that problem forward and make it equally applicable to the mayor, should it be adopted, because it doesn't seek to solve that problem for the mayoral office either.
Okay, so we either, we either move forward with the language in the proposed resolution, or we give direction to modify it, at least for one of the office, one of the positions?
That's right.
Okay.
Well, is there another choice, where we could rewrite measure Z and just include the mayor in a four-year position, a four-year term, and just have him vote on measure Z again? Or, you know, whatever it would be.
The, the answer is that, that's a choice that's available to you. In fact, the, the measure that's presented to you, it begins with, it is an amendment to measure Z, to include the mayor.
Why don't we amend out that one-year thing, too, then?
That's the prerogative of the council.
That would take further refinement of the resolution, though, and another, another discussion on the council to, to change that language, right?
Yes.
Special election, you know?
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Well, I don't think we ought to have a special election, do we?
It was a special election.
No, it was, it was twenty, it was November two thousand and ten.
I'm talking about Lisa.
Oh, yeah, 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 but, but she's, based upon what the city attorney said, she's okay, because the one-year short-term does not meet the definition of two years, so she's okay.
Wait, wait, could I, is that right? Because I thought you said in the first sentence, she was invited, she can only serve one four-year term, and then the third, the last sentence at the end, she can serve three terms, or portions of three terms.
I did say there is an ambiguity between the two, the first...
So you can't tell us with certainty what, whether she has two, two terms or three?
Yeah, the, the, the problem in the first sentence of measure Z, and I'll read it again, "Any council member who has served two consecutive terms, or eight consecutive years, shall be ineligible to serve again in that office until an intervening period of two years has elapsed." Now, in fairness, I would say this, I would say that as of the time, in your scenario, you have Councilmember Sobek seeking reelection in two thousand and twenty, having already served five years, right? At that date, having served five years, she would not be barred from seeking reelection. That eight-year threshold would get crossed during her second, her second term, and she would then be barred from seeking reelection in two thousand and twenty-four.
I just thought we had a chance here to clean up some sloppy language.
So if I might suggest, there seems to be some concurrence here, at least on the resolution to put before the voters a measure for a four-year mayoral term beginning in two thousand and sixteen. I sense that, that, that that's a valid thing of the council. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion on that, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second on that.
Remember, we did say we wanted to read it, you know what I mean, we will get to read that.
Oh, yeah, we'll get the ballot language, oh, yeah, absolutely.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second for... Okay, we have a second, a motion and a second. Call roll on that one.
Mayor for year 16.
Mayor for year 16.
Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Denver?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye. Mr. Attorney?
What's the issue?
The issue was, I was seeking clarity, Mr. Mayor, that you just adopted Resolution 15-488. I just wanted to make the record clear that that's what we did.
Very good, yes, thank you very kindly. That was a motion with respect to, um, what was the number on that?
15-488.
Very well, thank you kindly. And so, my understanding, then, is that there doesn't seem to be support to put another question on, in terms of that starting in 2018. So, let's, let's talk about the term limit, uh, resolution at this point, then. Mr. August?
Can I just, uh, real quickly, I probably, oh, yeah, thank you. Uh, I just want your term limits to be the same as the counsels. I think we've all agreed on that.
Yeah, I think that's, I, I think that's the right thing to do.
I agree with you on that.
I, I really do. I mean, I, I'm not a term limit guy. I think it's bad for Sacramento. Um, I think it's, uh, bad for municipalities, but the voters have spoken on it, and I think the intention was for it to apply, be applicable to all of us, and the ballot measure language at the time just didn't include the scenario that, that the voters would approve a mayor at large. So, is there a motion on that question?
Right, I make that motion.
We have a motion on that, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Call that roll. This is to the matter of Resolution number what?
15-490.
Thank you very kindly.
Mayor Protem Denver?
Aye.
Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye. Does that take care of discussion item 12.1? I believe that it does. Okay, very well.
I'll be back for Lisa in nine years, just to cover this up, please.
You know, I just have to, I know I maybe should have mentioned this before, but, you know, from a historical perspective in this county, there are only Menifee and Desert Hot Springs. For the cities that have mayors at large, Menifee and Ma, and Desert Hot Springs are the only two with two-year terms. All the other desert cities that have mayor at large, the city of Riverside and the city of Paris, all recognize that it doesn't make, it, it seems to not be good governance to have a majority of the council turn over every two years. Um, and, um, you know, when, when you talk about having continuity in leadership, um, I think it's important to at least put to the question, to the voters, for that potentiality. And, uh, can't speak for my new mayoral colleague, Mr. Mayor-elect Modus in Desert Hot Springs, but I think they'll probably be looking and exploring this option down the road, too. Whether, whether the Menifee voters vote on it or not, hey, it, you know, it is what it is, but at least, uh, we, we voted to get it out there, and at what point, then, can we see language down the road, Madam Clerk, as the chief elections officer for the city? Um, I mean, we have a deadline to submit language to the registrar, but it's probably going to be in May or June, I would imagine.
Yeah, probably around that time.
So, if we can write it to be, to remove the ambiguity from Measure Z between the first and the last sentence, I think that'd be great. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, good job to one and all. On to city attorney reports.
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Very, we don't have any more, uh, CFD elections tonight. Mr. Johnson, city manager reports?
Yes, I have, uh, one, uh, quick announcement. Uh, we're, we are going through, um, little bit of a staff adjustment period. You'll have a staff report at the next council meeting in December. We did have a resignation of one of our senior CIP, um, public works engineers, and we're taking that opportunity to reshuffle our deck in public works. What you will see come before you is nothing, no other request for funding for the staffing. We'll adjust everything in the current budget, and then we'll ask you for some fancy new titles, um, as we search for some, um, folks to fill some holes.
Pay changes?
Um, there will be some pay changes, um, but again, it's all within the current budget. Secondarily, and the most fun thing I get to share with you tonight, is one of the reasons our senior management analyst, Gina Gonzalez, is not here, is we applied for an award. It, it's called a Polaris Award, through the Public Relations Society of America, based on our Menifee Moving Capital Improvement Program brochure that we designed and mailed out to our residents, and have promoted with our $100 million worth of projects that we have going on. Uh, we were invited to go to the award ceremony tonight. Gina is sitting in for us, and I have in my hot little hand right here, an award the city of Menifee won, a Capella Award for the Menifee Moving Campaign. We were selected out of 60 recipients, only us and Western Municipal Water District, and she wrote, winner, winner, chicken dinner.
Wow.
So, that's another, that's another award for the city of Menifee. I think that's our sixth in the last two and a half to three years. Uh, we'll be putting out a press release on that, and we're pretty excited, and that concludes my report for tonight.
Well, I think we can, we can do an oral press release with the press enterprise back there in the corner, about our seventh award in the last, or it's not six.
Probably don't say anything about chicken dinners, though.
Congratulations, Mr. Johnson. Well done on your leadership for that, and the rest of the team, and the council for, uh, having a good policy directive to make that all go, and, and that's, that's great, that's fantastic.
Thank you, just another one to hoist, hoist up in the last couple of years.
Yeah, absolutely. Does that conclude your city manager reports?
Yes, thank you.
Well done. Uh, are there any future agenda requests from council?
I, I didn't see, um, the issue that I brought up in the last meeting. I know that that's on our radar, but. It's on, we forgot to add it, but it's on. We're, we're going to schedule that for the second meeting in December, to make sure that, uh, Councilmember-elect Sobek is a part of that discussion. We know that December 2nd is going to be pretty heavy, so we wanted to move that, uh, discussion to the 16th, I believe it is.
In mine, uh, the, the, um, containers?
Uh, that's down the road a little bit, but yes, we're, we're still gathering intel on that, but it is on. If you, if you'd like us to schedule for the 17th, we can do our darndest to get it here, but that's one that's going to need to go to planning commission and then back to council.
I think, I think what both are suggesting is to make sure that we, and I know it was city clerk transition.
Uh, the third one's on there. Consideration of shipping containers and commercial areas of the city, request by Mayor Protem.
Very good. Mr. August?
I really isn't going to do any good to mention this at this meeting one time, but I did want to remind you, I don't know how you feel about it, about the Thanksgiving Day thing at the, uh, community center, uh, be serving free food over, everybody already knows about that.
What Thanksgiving Day, Case, what?
Twenty-sixth.
What are you talking about?
Thursday, Case Inocero Center, when Mr. Falco's going to pay for dinners.
I have absolutely no idea what you're talking about.
Would you mind explaining that, uh, Mr.?
So, the Interfaith Council has, um, approached, uh, city staff and requested use of Case Inocero's Palm Room to accommodate a Thanksgiving feast for those in need, um, open to all, open to the public, all ages. Uh, there are several other Thanksgiving dinners going on in the city, another of which is occurring at the, uh, Case Inocero Center on a different day, uh, actually, the week before, and so this is just another opportunity for the community to come in and, uh, feast together. Uh, and as I understand it, is partially funded by Mr. Falco, uh, but the Interfaith Council is the one who is, uh, the permit holder and facilitating all the volunteers to support, uh, the meal service.
Yeah, it's by reservations and servings will be at, uh, what, 10, 12, and four?
Correct, three, three separate serving times.
And I, and I think I heard it was so, it was just packed.
You hear that?
Yeah, today, I think.
Are you, did you really?
Yeah.
Okay. And also, uh, we're having that town hall on the 3rd of December. I'll mention that at the next council meeting, uh, over at Sun City Civic Center regarding the homeless situation and some problems that they're having over in that part of the city. Everybody knows about that.
What town hall meeting?
Town hall meeting on the 3rd, uh, of December, at 3 o'clock, at, um, Webb Hall, and it's going to, regarding the homeless aggressive panhandling in Cherry Hills Plaza. There'll be some other issues about scams for seniors. Police Department will be there, Department of Social Service and County of Riverside will be there, our code enforcement will be there, our city manager will be there, and anybody from the city who wants to come will be there.
Okay, excellent. I think, uh, my point that I'm trying to make, gentlemen, is that these matters should be, uh, made available to all council members, and, uh, not hear about it at a council meeting.
Yeah, there's flyers, there's flyers for the town hall meeting right on the counter, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, what flyers?
For the town hall meeting.
I worked during the day, I don't get to the city hall to check the flyers and the foyer. I expect to hear these things from our staff. No, I'm not throwing staff under the bus.
No, you're correct. I, I believe it's on the update, but I'm not positive.
You know what I'm trying to say?
Okay. Yeah, I believe it was on the update.
Was it?
I, I think I read it there, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not positive. I'll, I'll check. If it's not, we'll include it.
If it was, I said corrected. Okay, so we have a town hall meeting, and we have a turkey-free dinner at Case Inoceros. Um, all right, very good. Are there any other future agenda requests for council, from council?
Let me?
Hearing none. Um, what I'd like to do with the concurrence of the council is, I'd like to adjourn this meeting, um, in honor of all the victims of the terrorist attack in France over the last few days. We are adjourned.